I think it's a lot more than that. It makes me feel good. Every year it just keeps getting a little more brown. Well, that's good.
It's probably going to be long for days. Yeah. We'll be out there in a little while. It's ready. All right. Now, there's two. Thanks, John. Thank you.
I think it's a lot more than that.
And it makes me feel good. Every year it just keeps getting a little more brown. Well, that's good. It's not looking good. We need probably going for days. Yeah. The way that happened. You know, it's supposed to be on the fairgrounds. But we got something a little more important today. But we'll be out there in a little while. It's ready. All right. Now, there's two. Thank you, sir.
Um, well, I'd ask. Our time is ready. I might have. I guess we should just. Yeah. Is there a meeting or a meeting right now? Or? Is it? Well, I wonder. Okay. Well, I'm. I know. It's complicated.
They're talking for. Yeah. That's why. What do you want? Okay. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Um, well, I'd ask. I would like to ask. I have solid. Yeah. Solid. Let's just. On the time. Yeah. Is there a meeting right now? Or? Is it? Yeah. I would ask. 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 Yeah. Is there a meeting right now? Or? Is it? Well, one of the. Uh, maybe not. Okay. Well, that's fine. That was great. I know. It's complicated.
They were talking for. You know, they had. They called.
Wow. So tomorrow. Do you think about the last step?
But. They put them for.
I don't. It was like seven thousand.
So.
I assume.
Each stall, you mean the four inch person of you?
Yes. Yes. Sure. Absolutely. Yes. Oh. Yeah.
Take it over.
Eddie is the.
Why are you running this? Stand right here. Stand here like this and. Her and.
Now, gee.
Smile real pretty, Bill. Does this all count?
Oh. Go in.
No, we're at the chairs. I did this wrong.
He's never done. It's a ladder. It's the.
You should get her.
And the river's gonna be.
Are you ready?
I'm looking for. Oh, if you could just take. Right. Not much. Yeah. 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 Is that, is that okay? Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Put your ID over later, maybe.
Okay. As soon as. But as soon as.
I will. Pictures. Give me the awesome picture of you if you want.
Yes. Sounds good.
Grab your knife when you're ready.
Yeah.
You got that. Wait. Yeah. We're just. Love the sign up there. Yeah, sure. Fine. Okay, thank you, sir.
May Brian, huh? I guess not.
I guess, uh. I'm wondering if they'll send. Usually they send someone else.
Commissioner need. For us, is there a commissioner?
It's just the sound of one hand clap.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, like. Sure, actually, if you don't mind, um, just emailing it to Lacy or you know, right on there. So. Thank you so much. I like my. Sure. Actually, if you don't mind, um, just emailing it to Lacy or you know, right on there. So. Thank you so much. Gee. I like that. I'm sure. Yeah. Like it. Sure, actually, if you don't mind, um, just emailing it to Lacy or you know, right on there. So. Thank you so much. Gee. I like that. I'm sure.
Name you Brian. Oh. I think we want to. Five days. I'll work for two years. He was on class two. Yeah. That'd be. All right.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. 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 Uh, I'll have.
I know you took. Yeah. Some crowd. I'm in the middle. I'm just. Really. You. You're sitting. You're sitting. Sitting. Yeah. I was counting on the trail. I told you. That's mine. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. I'm not pulling. I'm not pulling. Where they do. Oh. Hey. There's a game. 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 Bill. Good day. Good day, guys. I'll be talking to Ken tomorrow. He's got to hang enough with the ball. Hey. Three. Saturday morning early, Bill. What? Saturday morning. Yeah, yeah. We got way down there. Yeah. Eight cog or south. Whatever Ken says. Earl better. They start. They're all. Ten people in it. What? Probably like ten plus people in it. Yeah, it's about. About ten, twelve. Okay, we'll call this meeting. Danny, you want to start us off with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. Gentlemen, were there any additions or additions?
No, sir.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the July second public business meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to start out with a presentation. I'm real glad to see this one going. This will be a presentation to Edward Calvin Ott, State of Maryland 4H Alumni of the Year Citation. Doctor, would you like to come up and make a few statements?
We are also really excited about this citation and we appreciate your, the opportunity to be here today. The Maryland 4H Alumni Award is designed to honor 4H members who have continued their love and support of 4H into their adult lives. The main criteria for this award is that the winner is utilizing their exemplary skills learned as a 4H member to continue to enhance the 4H program. We are proud to announce that of the nearly 10,000 4H volunteers throughout the state of Maryland, one of our own, Eddie Ott, was selected as the winner of this prestigious award. Eddie Ott has been a volunteer for Allegheny County 4H for nearly 30 years. His 4H history goes way back to 1957 when he started 4H here and he often reminisces what it was like showing livestock at our fairgrounds and all of the many positive changes he has seen in the fair and the 4H program. He also has fond memories of attending 4H camp in Western Maryland. Back in 1962, he was inducted into the 4H All-Stars, which really is an honor as well. But currently, he's the leader of the Mountain and Valley Livestock Club with over 40 youth, which is one of the largest clubs, and 20 volunteers. He works diligently to make certain that the members have an educational program at every meeting, as well as encouraging youth to enjoy lots of recreational opportunities and camaraderie. And he's been really instrumental in increasing the club numbers, which we're really proud of because that's, that's something that with all of the opportunities that youth have here in Allegheny County, you know, it's, it's difficult. 4H, uh, we want it to continue to grow and Eddie has been really instrumental in that, so we want to thank him for that. So, in closing, we're so grateful of all of your contributions, Eddie, and the dedication and support to our 4H program and we're so proud that you were selected by the state of Maryland to, um, receive this alumnus of the year award. So, congratulations.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Sir, congratulations. Thank you, Terry. Okay, Allegheny County, Maryland official citation, Edward Calvin Ott, State of Maryland 4H, 2014 Alumni of the Year. Whereas Allegheny County Governor, Colonel Maryland, wishes to publicly recognize Edward Calvin Ott, a resident of Clearville, Pennsylvania. And whereas Edward Calvin Ott joined Allegheny County 4H during his formative years nearly 60 years ago. He showed livestock at the Allegheny County Fair, attended the Western Maryland 4H camp, and was honored as an Allegheny County 4H All-Star as well as a State of West Virginia 4H All-Star. And whereas Calvin Ott became a volunteer with Allegheny County 4H 30 years ago, has encouraged multiple generations to pursue agriculture and year after year continues to be an indispensable person to the Allegheny County 4H. And whereas Edward Calvin Ott was awarded the State of Maryland 4H 2014 Alumni of the Year for his lifelong activities and his commendable organization. Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County, wish to extend our sincere appreciation to Edward Calvin Ott for his significant contribution to our community. And witness whereof, we have here on Tuesday that our plans and cause to seal Allegheny County, Maryland to be a fix, the 16th of July, the year 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Craig Brody, and Jacob Chase. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jake remembers 30 years ago when you started.
That's right. Sorry.
There's. I'd like you to rest of you out there, 4H is an unbelievable organization that does quite a bit for our county. And now, this is another thing that I'm quite proud to have, a presentation, Allegheny County Opportunity Scholarship update, Mr. Jones, please.
On behalf of our Board of Trustees, Jane Belt, who's with us today, our vice chair, our foundation board of directors, Dr. Taylor, who's with us today, our faculty and staff, and most importantly, our students, I'm here to thank you for your support of this program. Your investment has greatly enhanced the economic opportunities for our citizens and our community by supporting education, job training, and career preparation, as well as supporting families and the core values that reflect our community. We are most grateful for your vision to make this happen. The future of the region's well-being is dependent on having an educated work and skilled workforce and Allegheny College of Maryland is committed to serving as an educational partner to meet that need. We will continue to develop and enhance our academic and career programs and instructional delivery systems to meet the needs of this community. Thank you.
On behalf of the college, again, I'm very happy to be here and pleased to present the year one report for the Opportunity Scholarship Program. Being a good steward of these funds is just critically important to the college and the foundation and we're delighted to present the fiscal year 2015 report, which, if I could distribute that. I know we have a limited amount of time and we put a lot of information here. I'd like to just give a couple of highlights, but certainly be glad to provide more information or detail any different information that's there. Inside the, on the front cover, you'll see a map of Allegheny County in the word impact. And I hope and trust you'll agree with me, when we go through the fast facts and the information, you will see the tremendous impact of this program on this community and on the college. Inside the front cover, you'll notice the fiscal year 2015 fast facts. I'd like to just go through these. These are just the impact of the program during the first year. Recipients of this investment represent every community in our county. All public and private schools in Allegheny County, as well as home school and GED students, have been awarded funded through the program. Recipients have included students from nearly every major, every curriculum offered by the college. The average range of recipients started at age 17 to go through age 54 with an average of 24 to show the non-traditional impact of this. The early college jumpstart program assists the K to 12 students, providing those that are low income, free to reduce lunch to $100 per course to take from the college. The Opportunity Merit Scholarship, that award the most highest achievement students, awarded over 270 scholarships during the fiscal year. The Tuition Subsidy to help those with a documented need, unmet need, supported 170 awards during fiscal year 15. And the Workforce Development component of the program provided nearly 150 awards for both professional and workforce training. When we put this together on the second page, the award text, we wanted to, again, show the breadth and the depth of the program. And that's why we have four primary components that we shared with the Commissioners and got your, um, your blessing on these. The Tuition Subsidy for those that had an unmet need, the merit to reward the highest achievement students, the Workforce Development to support the area businesses, the local economy, and also the Early College to help support the K to 12. And this is kind of the centerfold of the program. Again, I'm not going to read this to you, but it has more of a program impact. It shows the number of awards on the green column on the left. It shows the average GPA, but it also shows all the academic programs on the, on the credit side. Nearly every academic program is represented here. On the right side, for the workforce development, it shows just some of the train in, some of the programs that were supported to benefit our community, focusing on advanced manufacturing, information technology, cybersecurity, and other needs identified by those in our region as well. The high schools are represented there at the bottom, every public, private high school, GED and home school students, cities represented, and some, you know, municipalities that are not incorporated are also, um, receive scholarships, but, um, they're, they're just not incorporated cities to show up on their official address. Economic impact, if you turn to the next page, shows the impact of this program in our community. The college enjoys a 15.2% rate of return on the investment of ACM. ACM students increase the tax base of this community by $10.8 billion per year. For every dollar of support, a dollar thirty comes back annually in the form of higher tax receipts and weighted costs. And the annual rate of return is 4.3% as well. We receive thank you letters from hundreds and hundreds of students as well every year. And I have for you hundreds of letters that talk about the specific impact of this program for the Commissioners. I'd be honored to give this to you as a gift. I have on the back page summarized some of those comments and literally there are hundreds. It's hard to pick out one or two and I randomly just pulled about a dozen. Some students said, "I take my school very seriously and promise that every penny will be put to good use. Your financial support has allowed me once that closer to my goal. It has inspired me to help others by giving back to the community. Your choice will help me become a better partner and provide for my family and a pillar of our community." Toward the bottom, "I consider this investment as to be an investment in the future, in my future, and I appreciate this great opportunity." I think it shows the impact. And when you read these letters, some, they're not just a short letter, sometimes they're a handwritten four or five page letter, talking about the family, the impact, what they've been through, how this money is an investment in them. So I'd like to publicly say thank you for your investment in this program, for your vision to make it happen and for making the impact.
And David, would you go to the very last page and read the one in the center, the longest one?
Sure. "I was a homemaker until I got the opportunity to attend Allegheny College of Maryland to pursue my educational goals. Now I will be the first person in my family to attend college and I hope that my success will inspire my children and extended, extended family to develop and achieve educational goals that they're in." And I think you'll see that same sentiment reflected in dozens and dozens and dozens of letters. And I don't want to burden you, although I would be honored to give this to the county Commissioners just to show the impact when you see these letters and the impact of your support and investment in our, in our community.
That'd be great, David. And the, the early college students that are going out to ACM and lots of those students, you know, you don't qualify for it even if you're still in high school. And so that definitely makes a difference if they want to get a head start in college. If they have that need, we fully support their, like.
Absolutely, that's wonderful.
I can clearly that this partnership, because your campus has supported this county for many years. Yeah, I first entered what was then Allegheny Community College on Frederick Street in 69. That was the previous century, Ken. You don't remember that. Nineteen sixty nine.
I was going to say.
Not eighteen sixty nine. But it's always tremendous pleasure to attend your functions out of campus and see how that campus has grown, how it continues to grow. And that campus limit makes, makes this county much stronger. So, I, I truly think this scholarship program is the key to our economic success in the next couple of years. It'll be, be good to take another look in six or seven years and see how many people.
as well, just to show the continued impact of this investment.
Appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
There's another guy on the three yard field.
I've been on this Foundation Board for twenty years. When I first started, we had about one-point-three million. Now we're up to about eleven million, thanks to you. The development is fantastic. When we sit and listen to students' needs, the needs are always much higher than the money that we have, and the money that you all provide makes a huge difference. And I would talk to my parents for it, and I thank them because they give me a rocky gap twice a week. And they're ninety years old, they still give. Allegheny College works collaboratively to better economic development. Opportunities provide the education, job training, career preparation services needed by our residents. This college makes an impact like no other entity in our community. The comprehensive scholarship statistics are impressive. The documented economic impact shown by external entities is powerful, but quotes from these students show that this program is life-changing, just like what the one that we read here today. The front cover of the report says, "Impact," and I can't think of a better word to show the importance of this program. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on into our action agenda now. Item number three, Code Home Rule Bill five-dash-fifteen. Mr. Benn, Money Man.
Good evening. Good evening. Back when, June, we introduced Code Home Rule Bill five-dash-fifteen and seeking authorization of five-point-seven million dollars worth of water and sewer projects. It was funded through USDA and MTA. Part of the bond bill process, we have to introduce, we then have a hearing, which we did on July second. Tonight, for the simple reason, your first opportunity to go ahead and take a vote on this bond bill. We'll remind you, this does not tie us to the debt, just yet, and simply authorization for students' projects. And if you don't mind, I'll leave a quick little project. I'll leave it up to you. We've got three-and-a-half million tags for rates crossing sewage pump station upgrade, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Route Thirty-Six water, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Barrowville water, five-hundred thousand for Sunnyside water, three-hundred thousand for Creek Burn water, two-hundred thousand dollars for Font Circle water, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Rawlins water, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for Braddock Run sanitary sewer improvements, and two-hundred thousand dollars for Best River Sanitary Sewer Improvements. So a lot of projects, some haven't even started yet, they're in concept mode, some have already started or applied out of bid, so we're very in stage to officially authorize us to proceed with the power. So I'll leave it to you.
Do we have any questions? None, sir. Do we have a motion to support Code Home Rule Bill five-dash-fifteen? So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Now we'll move to item number four, Resolution Fifteen dash sixteen.
This resolution is actually one that is just an amendment to Resolution Fifteen dash nine, the adopted back on May seventh, and it was for a one-point-six million dollar Maryland water charity loan authorization. There's one thing that the attorneys, as they review it, found, one of the repayment terms was marked as twenty-seventeen, it actually begins repayment February first, twenty-sixteenth. So what we have tonight is just a simple revision for you. If you approve this, we'll actually be closing these loans July third. So...
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
And before we go any farther, I call attention to our new camera person over there, a blushing, noodly woman. And so let's hear a big round of congratulations. And her face always turns that color red. Congratulations to Drake also. Okay, we'll move to item number five, memorandum of understanding management services agreement for tourism.
Good evening, Commissioners. County Administrator Everly requested that I come before you tonight and present a two-year contract for management service agreement for Rivers Edge Business Associates of Old Town, Maryland, to provide tourism services for the county from July one, twenty-fifteen to June thirty, twenty-seventeen, a two-year contract.
How long has she been pre...
I looked back at that, and I believe previously we had contracted with the Chamber of Commerce, and I think that ended in two thousand nine, and then we moved to Rivers Edge, I believe it was twenty-ten, I was supposed to...
Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion?
Is it just an interview, a two-year? One-year, two-year?
This is the first time it's been reviewed in a while. If my memory serves me correct, sometimes it's done one-year, sometimes it's been two-years, it just depends. This term is for two-years, what we're proposing tonight.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second this motion. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Item number six, introduction...
Thanks, man.
Thank you. A introduction of Code Home Rule Bill six-dash-fifteen. Mr. Jake?
That is mine.
That is all yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is something that we've talked about before, and it's been a while coming, and it's going to be a while before we can get it enacted, and hopefully it'll be in effect by July one of two thousand sixteen. So what this does is it expands the Homestead Property Tax Credit. That's based on your assessment, so right now your assessment has to go up seven percent for you to qualify for the tax credit, which very few people get, even when assessments are increasing rapidly. We're going to lower that to four percent. It's more in line with most of the other counties in the state of Maryland, and it doesn't have too big of an impact to our revenues right now, but the hope is that it will in the future. In the mid-two thousands, this is kind of where the county got in some financial trouble when all your assessments are skyrocketing, and you're paying more and more taxes, but we didn't have to increase your rates, your assessments went up and you had to pay it. Then when the assessments go down, we lost a lot of revenue. So this is the safeguard for future county commissions to kind of keep our revenue more closely aligned, and it also gives tax breaks to folks when their assessments go up. So, thank you.
Sir, I think you ought to have the honor of... Did you make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Commissioners, this is the introduction, and we will schedule a public hearing for the thirtieth, take public comment at that time. Okay, item number seven, Barrelville Prince Albert and Sunnyside Water Project. Mr. Yetter?
Hello, Commissioners? This project, or at least the concept stages of this effort, has been going on for a while. We've had public meetings and also a couple of votes. In order to make sure that we got the opinion of many people who possibly could, county staff went door-to-door to try to get, make sure we had a good coverage of what people would, what people wanted. Based on that, the Sunnyside area voted they would like to have county water, with the exception of a small pocket in Upper Sunnyside, which we believe we can lay out the system and just skip back that area. They're pretty much all grouped together. The Barrelville Water Company customers voted no, they do not want county water. The Prince Albert area, which is out past the Sunnyside Water Company Service area, voted yes. Usually USDA requires that we pass a customer, they have to hook up, but in this case, they said that we could pass the Barrelville Water Company customers since they already had water service, so that was helpful to this project. And the water company said they will not allow any of their customers to connect to the county service when it goes by. So with that, we've brought, the water has been brought down Route Thirty-Six and another project. We'd like to get your approval to apply for funding for these two other pieces, the Sunnyside area and the Prince Albert area to provide water service. We believe that we're optimistic about getting funding from the USDA. We'll do the project in-house.
Are you good? Any other questions?
None, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, this is the introduction, and we will schedule a public hearing for the thirtieth, take public comment at that time. Okay, item number seven, Barrelville Prince Albert and Sunnyside Water Project. Mr. Yetter?
Hello, Commissioners? This project, or at least the concept stages of this effort, has been going on for a while. We've had public meetings and also a couple of votes. In order to make sure that we got the opinion of many people who possibly could, county staff went door-to-door to try to get, make sure we had a good coverage of what people would, what people wanted. Based on that, the Sunnyside area voted they would like to have county water, with the exception of a small pocket in Upper Sunnyside, which we believe we can lay out the system and just skip back that area. They're pretty much all grouped together. The Barrelville Water Company customers voted no, they do not want county water. The Prince Albert area, which is out past the Sunnyside Water Company Service area, voted yes. Usually USDA requires that we pass a customer, they have to hook up, but in this case, they said that we could pass the Barrelville Water Company customers since they already had water service, so that was helpful to this project. And the water company said they will not allow any of their customers to connect to the county service when it goes by. So with that, we've brought, the water has been brought down Route Thirty-Six and another project. We'd like to get your approval to apply for funding for these two other pieces, the Sunnyside area and the Prince Albert area to provide water service. We believe that we're optimistic about getting funding from the USDA. We'll do the project in-house.
Are you good? Any other questions?
Mr. Yetter? And we're doing Lower Sunnyside and skipping Upper. So we're doing, there's only a small piece of Upper Sunnyside that's not interested. I do think we can pick up people who are and just not go to that pocket. Luckily, they seem to be grouped together.
Any other questions?
None, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, this is the Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Request for Proposal. This is Sarah.
Good evening. So this is to advertise an RFP for, that was requested by the city of Crossburg for the intersection of University Drive, College Avenue, and Bell Street, taking consideration of the new public safety building at MSU, and is to provide recommendations to improve the safety and efficiency of that intersection. Hopefully, we can get it out on the street next week, and they have it coming, and award it after September, maybe late August. So I bring the permission to advertise that.
Do we have any questions?
No. So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll move to Resolution for, we'll move to the Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization Request for Proposals.
All right, so this is, do you need a tip amendment?
Okay, Resolution five-dash-fifteen.
Yes, okay, so, excuse me. So this is for the Transportation Improvement Program, and we updated it as needed. The MT asked to add fifty-three to end funding for nonprofit capital assistance. I believe this is for purchasing vehicles for friends who are to enhance mobility in the area for seniors and children's facilities. And the state highway administration asked to revise the Barrelville Road Bridge Project, add funding to ships and cost for design to construction and purchasing right-of-way in that area, so this tip amendment will make those changes.
Any other questions? Your motion?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, thank you so much.
And come on down again, then.
Commissioners, this evening I have six items on the agenda for you to review and consider. Items eleven, twelve, Commissioners, are reappointments for positions on the county's social services board and the oil control board. Item thirteen is a bid award to Beddu Valley Petroleum for unleaded gas, diesel fuel, E oil, and kerosene. Item fourteen is the county's annual bid award for workers' comp to the Hartford Insurance Company for F-116. Commissioners, item fifteen is a declaration of surplus for eight vehicles which were abandoned as a result of police investigations. And two of the, the two vehicles which are now under EBITDA by the county sheriff's office, and likewise, the final item on the sheet tonight is a request for a declaration of surplus for two vehicles assigned to the county's Department of Emergency Services.
Do we have any questions?
None, sir.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. David, we have a bid open?
Commissioners, we did earlier this week. It is for Phase Four of Braddock Run Sewer Rehab Project, and we hope to be in a position in a couple of weeks to move ahead and be working on that contract.
Mr. Rudd?
Yes, I do have a statement to read. This is from the closed executive session, which the Commissioners settled on July second, two thousand fifteen at three-thirty P.M. Fourth county commissioners, at a public session convened on Thursday, July second, two thousand fifteen at three o'clock P.M., voted to go into a closed executive session. The meeting, time, and place and the purpose of the meeting were provided, and a public notice provided in the same manner to the same entities as received notice of all public meetings. Meeting was closed in accordance with the general provisions of Article of the Antited Code of Maryland, or the General Provisions Article of the Antited Code of Maryland, Section three dash three oh five, and the purposes for which the meeting was closed were as follows. One, to consult with staff consultants and other individuals about pending or potential litigation, that is under subsection B eight. Consultation with counsel to obtain legal advice, that is under subsection B seven. Those in attendance for the closed session were Commissioner William R. Valentine, Commissioner Craig B. Purvey, Jr., Commissioner Jake C. Shade, County Administrator David A. Everly, County Attorney William M. Rudd, and Director of Emergency Services Richard DeBoer, as well as Recording Secretary Cindy Young. Discussion was held regarding possible litigation involving three matters. The first related to a public right-of-way, the second related to a public utility, public utility rates, and the third related to a zoning matter. At the conclusion of the discussion concerning the above matters, the Commissioners voted unanimously to adjourn the closed session, and it was adjourned at four-ten P.M. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioners, Jake, do you have any statements you'd like to make?
None, deny?
Sir, I'll just keep it very brief. If everyone will take notice in the veil next week, they've noticed the bower is closing, we have new business, and it'll be building a new business there, and the reason I bring this up is because about every other day on Facebook someone posts that they've talked to the vice president of the Sheet's Corporation or this corporation, and they were not coming to the veil. Well, if they just pay attention about Monday or Tuesday next week, the bower will start to disappear, and then by about November, something or other, it'll see something else appear, so I'll leave that one to rest publicly. I can't answer enough stuff through the gossip columns of things on Facebook and stuff, but just to put that one down. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I'd just like to, once again, say thanks to the people from 4H that were here earlier. That really is a tremendous organization when you see what all they do with the students. They've got a fantastic robotics course that the students go through, and she gives great training and leadership and everything else for the students to go through, 4H, so I think we're very lucky to have them here in Allegheny County. Now we'll move into public comments. We've got one speaker signed up. Mr. Bonstein?
Good evening, Quinter.
Please give your name and your address, and we have five minutes to state your business.
Chris Cage uh, wrote down the wording, read it back to all members present, and uh, everybody agreed at that point. The two thousand fourteen contract between the Allegheny County Fair and CBD was read the same. Um, this was a verbal and written agreement between all parties, including the uh, county officials. County officials as well as CDFD members agreed to allow Garrett Bonstein to run in the derby, even though he was an active member of the fire department, but myself and Cook did not at the time. We were instructed uh, that that was in the county orders, which is also is in the uh, contract itself. Starting into this year, I received information that I was going to be banned from the uh, fair as well this year, uh, that the policy contract was going to be changed. This is a lot of money that the fire department does receive. They receive over ten thousand dollars for the four events for one week of work, um, including the derbies, two derbies, Mudball, setting and tear down of the stage, um, in which I'm sure other departments in the county would be more unhappy to participate, to receive some of that funding as well, since they uh, don't get much money. Um, as far as the rules, um, the rules were posted on the Allegheny County website on June thirtieth. Um, there was nothing reflected that I couldn't run as a life member of the department. Slightly after that, the fire department received a uh, a letter. Um, the rules were removed from the county website the next day, which was July first. They were re uh, the rules were reposted on between the second of July and the fourth of July. Um, and at that time, the tru, the uh, rules had been changed, stating that no member could run if they were a life member. Um, as far as, I took the advice from county officials as well as fire department at that meeting in two thousand fourteen regarding what myself and Cook could do as far as quitting the department. I didn't quit for any other reason but to run derbies. I mean, that was the reason. As far as the fire department, they put me on life status. Um, as far as I know, I haven't received any, any paperwork showing that I'm a life member at this point. So regarding the uh, rule changes in the contract, um, I'm just trying to get some input, whether I misunderstood something, uh, at that two thousand fourteen meeting, or am I allowed to run? Or I, I just don't know which guidance as far as I took the, took the advice of the fire department, as well as the county officials there. I mean, it'd be easy for the county to put these events on themselves and donate the money throughout the county to all the departments. It would save any discriminations towards specific people not being able to run. I mean, Cook, I mean, Mr. Cook's allowed to run this year and I'm not. We've been through a resignation in two days apart. So I'm just trying to get some, you know, some advice, you know, if I could, if I'm allowed to run your county event this year, um, as far as that, I mean.
Well, I think that meeting had said no member of the fire department could run in that event, right?
Uh, I had the contract in two thousand fourteen.
That was the decision made at that meeting because of the appearance of a conflict of interest. The fire department was hosting the event, they supplied all the inspectors of the event, they supplied all the officials for the event, and that's why they felt that a member of that, for that fire department would be considered a conflict of interest for a member of that fire department to participate in that event.
If I could re-
The reason why your father was allowed to run, it is because you said you had a car built, and you asked if your father could compete in your car since you already had expenses? And we said, yes, he could. And what action did your father take that night of the derby?
He didn't run. Other, other drivers drove the vehicles. I still uh, still supported the derby itself. I brought vehicles down, and I had money involved in, had, you know, several thousand just in two trucks. I didn't run them. As far as the issue occurred there, um, I wasn't present at the time, but there was nothing in the rules that reflected that. And the only issue was, for that purpose, was to get a copy of this contract, which it does state in the contract signed by the county fair and the Crescent Town Fire Department, that as any member that has been an active member of Crescent Town Fire Department for the period from the last day of the previous fair to the last day of the current fair will be ineligible participating as a driver of this event, which I am not currently an active member of life status. All that is, it says, I had to report ten to twelve years for Crescent Town Fire Department. That's just saying, thank you for your service, you know, if you're, I can't run calls at that point as a life member. Um, as far as running calls, I could, I joined Rawlings Fire Department at the same time I quit, still help the community. And as far as that, any, anybody who belongs to another fire department, as far as a chief's agreement, can run calls with another department as long as they're certified. So I had not ran any calls with Crescent Town as a member of that department. So I'm just trying to get clarification. Like I said, here's the contract that the county signed with the fire department in two thousand fourteen, exactly where he was active member, which was okayed by county officials and all county people and the fire department. I mean, it'd be very easy for the fair, the county to do this, or theirself to save money, because four of the five officials are employed by the county the week of the fair. Four of them, four out of the five. I mean, it'd be very easy to do, then the money can be distributed throughout all the fire departments in the county. I mean, it is a county event, it's not Crescent Town's fair, it's the Allegheny County Fair, which everybody should be, have the opportunity to either, you know, have the county put it on, and if, if they want the funding, have, you know, say, look, you gotta have three people here for each event, we'll donate the money as, you know, as a donation. Everybody in the county should have a fair chan, or a fair chance to get the money. I mean, there's some departments that don't have any money in their account, and you've got Crescent Town, who's got a quarter to a half million dollars in their account at all times. I mean, it is what it is. But other departments are functioning with fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. I mean, that ten thousand dollars would help other departments.
Mr. Rudd? Um, how long have you been in the Allegheny County?
Good while, why?
Just curious. You ever remember the county passing that ordinance? Regulation concerning releasing the Allegheny County programs for demolition derbies during the week of the fair? Have you taken? So this is something between fair staff and Crescent Town Volunteer Fire Company?
So I don't think, well, then there's a music here then.
Yeah, well, my question, let's go back here, let's add a whole bunch of more information into the record here. About, why did this whole, why did this conflict erupt to begin with?
It was conflict saying that the uh, officials were initially cheating money, and then I had a bar, a bolt in a vehicle, uh, which was, the rules say it had to be welded, I had a bolt in there which was less than the weld itself. I had a bolt instead of a weld. Um, at that point, once I was inspected, I was told by the officials, if you'd like to run, you either got to take the bar out and go load it. Played your car backed up, took it out, loaded the bor, loaded the bar in, brought it back, they passed inspection.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Valentine, you were brought into this melee uh, a year or so ago to participate in some mediation of a lot of human cry that county fair staff were hearing from a multitude of fans who were alleging to county officials that there was cheating taking place during demolition.
Well, I, I think probably the worst thing is, is you made a statement that night, well, on cheating, and I'd have been cheating for a couple of years, and the other competitors didn't like that, because you'd won like two or three years in a row, you made the statement from the other competitor, competitor, well, I've been cheating for a couple of years. But as far as that contract, I think Crescent Town Fire Department is the one that built up that contract, just not known by the county.
But it's signed by the county, sir. I mean, it's, just like I was in the meeting, all, all eyes were pointed to you, Mr. Comeoff, for guidance in this contract itself, and you know that. It, it was all okayed by Mr. Comeoff and yourself, no one else. The fire department, as well as me and Mr. Cook were there present. Um, and I took, I didn't quit the fire department just to quit, I love helping my community. Um, I quit for that reason, I absolutely love running derbies. I got, I love doing it. I mean, I would have quit for any other reason, and I quit with the intention of, I took your guidance as far as that and the fire department's guidance, and they understood the same thing. That's why they put me as a life member, because the agreement is active member. A life status member is not an active member.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Are you still running runs for Crescent Town Ambulance?
No, sir, not at this current time then.
When's the last time you ran, did you run since you became a life member?
Uh, I ran, I ran, I ran as a mutt wave.
Yes.
With, from Rawlings.
Yes. You remember Rawlings, but you still run with Crescent Town Ambulance?
Anybody in the county?
So then you've done, you've got a life membership and kind of got this loophole, went out to Rawlings, you're still running with Crescent Town, which is the problem in the past, which was, you were connected with Crescent Town, you were winning the event sponsored by them, it was a conflict interest. You're still going, and you just got this loophole.
That was not, that was not the agreement.
But that's what the problem is. That's, that's the appearance of it in front of you, that the fair, the dealing with, see? If you'd have quit and just weren't part of any fire company anymore, and you were running, it probably wouldn't be an issue, but you're really going through the back door, which you couldn't do through the front door, and that is the problem. So it's an appearance of it in front of you.
I understand, I mean, if it's coming down that the uh, you know, the officials are cheating, maybe instead of punishing the drivers, can you put money in to put a show on after fair? It's, I mean, I was told myself that I can run any, any event down there, the Mudball, the Dirt Drag, I just cannot run the derby. So I'm getting punished, how about we just get some honest officials? If that's the issue, if you think they're cheating for certain people, if you think they're cheating for me, maybe they're cheating for somebody else. Just get different officials, and make it fair for everybody. I mean, I'm a taxpaying citizen of Allegheny County, I should be able to participate in events just like anybody else. I mean, I'm telling, I mean, I'm being told I can't let a county win, but, I mean, I feel, I feel myself, I pay my taxes, the only time that I'm late, I should be able to participate in these events, because it's something I absolutely love to do. I mean, it's, it's only fair, I mean, it's, there's, there's specifically changed the rules, and the fire department told me to change the rules just so I specifically can't run myself. Mr. Cook's allowed to run, I'm not. So I mean, it's-
Is he listed in any way as a member of the fire department now?
What's that?
Is he listed in any way as a member of the fire department?
I don't know, I, as far as me, they have never given me anything they know about.
Is he listed?
No, he, he belongs to Bowling Green, which he can still run mutt wave, he can still run mutt wave.
Is he listed as a life member or as an active member of the fire department now?
No.
Well, I'd say that's probably where they're making a difference.
Well, in, in the issue-
But the county had nothing to do with drawing up that contract.
But they signed it. It's a contract between the fair board, or the fair and the fire department. As far as the ca, as far as the fire department, it's their, I mean, they put me life status with the intention I can still run. Now, their end being enforced, they're saying by the county. And I'm, I've talked to Mr. Shape about this several times, and he says that the county has no, they're not in it, but they are in it because it's a county event. I mean, it's, it's not-
We don't judge the tomatoes, we don't judge the corn, and we don't judge the pigs. It's, there's an agreement with Crescent Town, Fire Company, and us to run the demolition derby. And they signed an agreement with the fair to do that. County has set the rules, just like we don't pick the fire department, or anybody else that has some event during fair weeks. I mean, I think that's the way it is, I mean.
I mean, is there, is there an option where like, other departments can get in to help out and get the funding? Or is it just Crescent Town's got it forever? I mean, can other departments in the county come and help out at the fair, at the fair and get funds? Or is this set in stone, where Crescent Town's got it for life?
There was nothing set in stone.
So if other departments would like to help, that they can help?
Uh, we will give the fair staff and evaluate that next year.
As far as next year, will I be able to run? I, I get in the know.
Hey, I, I would think your, your questions had to be to the fire department. Like that, we signed the contract, they wrote the contract, they put the wording in the contract, and I think that contract is approved by their board. It is before it ever comes to us, and basically, we're just the landlords. The only reason I was at that meeting that day, you called me.
Yes.
And so, to try to help mediate, I drove thirty-five miles from my house on the morning Saturday, and I thought we had it all ironed out there.
I didn't tell. I told you twice.
We, we made the option, let, let your dad run the car, and your, your dad got rather upset that night. I was the one who went and talked him, had him a copy of the, the contract and all.
I appreciate it.
And then he decided, well, I'm not gonna run anyway.
At least two of them, that was just the point, that they're allowing one member-
Hey, why you look so?
It, it was just, it was just a point that they're allowing, everybody agreed to allow one member to run, and not two other members, just as we want.
I, I would, I would say, I would say your, your, your questions all had to be to the fire department. It's their contract.
But it's, it's the fair-
It's their contract.
It's the Allegheny County Fair.
Well, we're just the landlords. We're just, they put on that event, it gets money for them, but then it also raises some money for the county, right? But it's their event, just like four H that was just here, you know, earlier. They put on all the livestock exhibitions, they're just merely the landlord. We give these people a place to have those activities. We don't, we don't pay Bowling Green to put that event on. That, that, they came to the county and say, hey, we'd like to do this for an fair week, we'll take X amount, and we'll pay the county X amount for allowing us to do it. So it is the fire department's event. The fire department drew up the contract, their board approved the contract. We, county commissioners, never took a vote on the contract.
So there's no issue with, from the county standpoint of me running?
None. And, and Mr. Bonstein? I, I think you got a bad deal, and, and I, I, but, but, but it's not us up here that did something dirty to you at all. And, and it's, it never came to us, I never even, I haven't seen the contract since, since you had it today, and I've, I've told you that, but it's, it doesn't involve the county, it, it involves the, the Bowling Green Fire Department, or Crescent Town. And I, I, I think that they, they were trying to take the easy way out, instead of saying, uh, you know, try to play games with you, instead of doing what, what, and, and again, they don't know what if they say next year, anyone can raise, but, Mr. Bonstein, I, I don't know what, what the recourse is there.
So I mean, as a county aspect, I mean, where, where do I go with this? I mean, as far as-
To the fire department.
I, they're not, they're not willing, that's why I'm coming to you today, sir, because it's a county event, I mean-
It's not a county event.
That, that's where you want.
It's not a county event. It's, it's a privately sponsored event, sponsored by the fire department. That's why, if it was a county event, the contract would be drawn up by the county. We'd say, this is what you have to do.
Is that, is that, is that, is that a possibility? The county take, take control of it, so no one can be discriminated? I mean, it's obviously, I mean, I'm just coming in front of you today because you, you know where my standpoint of this is. I'm specifically being discriminated against running this derby. It's fine, it is what it is, but I just want you guys to be aware that this is happening, but it might be happening with another event, but people's not coming out. I'm coming to you guys-
Let, let, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Can you go then, ask them to remove your name?
I tried.
Number?
I tried, I had a letter, I had a letter written to them, um, to get rid of my life status. Like I said, I went life status, like I was instructed, we went the week before the fair because we had to not be a member since the previous fair, okay? I did that. All my resignations said, that it said life status, whatever status is necessary. That's exactly what I was instructed to do by the county officials and the fire department. I did exactly what I was told to do. And you guys know that, and they know that. They're playing, they're, just like he said, I'm getting the bottom of the deal here, and it's specifically, I mean, members that's running the fair, running this derby, if it's their event, are specifically told me, we change the rules so you can't run. And it's at an Allegheny County event, that's all, that's, that's all I, I understand.
It's not an Allegheny County event. It's an event held in Allegheny County, but it is a Crescent Town Volunteer Fire Company event. They draw up the contract, they set the rules, they supply all the people, so that, that's where that difference is. Your beef is with the fire department, not with, not with us.
But just for the record, I have sent them a letter saying I'd like to recall my life status, no part of the fire department whatsoever. It is before the fair, so they change it next year or, it could continue to change, just like you said, if they keep it the same way it is this year, they told me once I was a life member, I can't go off life member. I don't know, I can't, when I give up, they told me I can't quit the department. I don't know what to do. I mean, I don't want to be part affiliated with it, I'm part of Rawlings right now, I haven't, I've not gained anything, I'm not gonna gain anything whatsoever from it. I don't want to be part of it just so I can run at the fa, at the fair next year. That's all I'm asking. If you guys can look into it, I already sent them the letter, whether they should put it to shredder, they probably did, because they don't care, but, or have the county officiated themselves, so there's no discrimination. I mean, the same officials worked for you guys during the week of the fair, so it's conflict, I mean, it's, they've worked for you guys already, so it would be hard for them to, for you to officiate it, county to get a couple more bucks in their pocket, and then they could share the money throughout the county. I mean, it's very simple, it's ea, it's easy solution, so no one's discriminated against. But I'm sure my five minutes are up, like I said, I appreciate your time, guys. Um, I just don't know where else to go with this, like I said, it's-
I will personally talk to the fire department.
I, I, I appreciate, like I said-
We're too late for this year.
I, I, I understand, and, and I'm willing not to take anything down there.
At that meeting, you tried to mediate, I was the one willing to talk to your dad that night, and I was talking to the fire department.